The time is now 5:34 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I see that we do have a quorum present. We welcome all of you here this evening. And we'll begin with the invocation being given by Councilman Carolina along with his leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the stay in which you've blessed us. Thank you for your guidance. Thank you for wisdom and the support you've bestowed upon us as we begin this meeting. Allow this gathering to engage in meaningful dialogue to grow closer as a group and strengthen the bonds of our communities. Bring clarity to us as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you. This prayer is also for peace and brotherhood in Georgetown County, peace and brotherhood in America, and peace and brotherhood worldwide. We ask of all things in your mighty name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Carolina. You'll have the agenda in front of you. Is there a motion for the approval of this meeting's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Carolina is their second.
Second.
Second by Councilor McCarroll. Any discussion? All in favor for the approval of the agenda as presented, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. We move then to our special reports and presentation. Our non-profit Spotlight Technical Scholars being presented by Ms. Pamela Vereen. Good evening, Ms. Vereen.
Good afternoon, Chairman Morant and to this county council. Thank you also very much for the opportunity to share on behalf of Georgetown County School District a little bit about our technical scholars program, which we have termed as Tech Scholars. This partnership arrangement between Georgetown County School District and Ori Georgetown Technical College. I had the privilege of serving as the Director of College and Career Readiness. And so these programs fall under our umbrella and we are able to encourage and invite our students to participate in these STEM and advanced manufacturing scholarship and programs. So the technical scholars program, as we advance the slide, thank you, is designed for high school students. These are going to be your juniors, beginning with your juniors and your seniors, who have already began to meet all of their core course requirements. And they then have time within their schedule where they can take advantage of programs and classes at Ori Georgetown Technical College. We want to speak specifically even about the beautiful facility, the Advanced Manufacturing Center, that many of our students are able to travel to and participate in those classes. So when we see STEM and advanced manufacturing, remember we're talking about those areas where you have your science, technology, engineering, and math applications. Some of the programs that we want to highlight that are offered in the tech scholars vein is HVAC. We have machine tool technology. We have mechatronics. There's nursing pathways and we are revisiting that. Those conversations are even ongoing now. Teacher education and welding. These serve so many advantages in that our students are able to start earning credit toward their high school, not just high school, but even college degrees and certifications. It helps these students to begin to see kind of the rigor and demands of college life that will help them in terms of the transition. And they also have the opportunity to begin to earn certifications, be it such as OSHA or AWS. They begin to already gain certifications that translate into the workplace and into the workforce. And they can be able to move into these positions even upon graduation. This allows them to reduce, significantly reduce the overall cost of their college tuition. One of the things I would simply want to highlight is that because of the SC-Win scholarship offerings, because the state has seen the need to invest in itself, in its own, a lot of these programs, your welding, your mechatronics, students are able to get scholarships. And then they can receive funding even with SC, the lottery scholarships, because if you maintain, carry six hours of coursework, then you can also receive that funding. And we're also very grateful for our Banelle Foundation that helps our students with their textbooks and their classroom supplies. And so there are many advantages to students taking part in the tech scholars program. We have actually one of our students, he graduated, I believe, last year in that photo. And we're just especially proud of all of our students. I would like to share, hopefully it will allow us to share our video that will give you a snippet. It's a little bit under three minutes, but just to allow you to see. If you haven't had the opportunity to be on the campus of the Advanced Manufacturing Center, you can kind of get a snapshot even of how that looks. And so we'll have the short video at this time. So that was just to give an overview, allow you to have a visual of the beauty of the center. Know that students are working with state-of-the-art tools, tools that they will be using actually in the workforce is what they are training on. So they're earning these college credits. They're able to earn credit even as a high school student. And so just to give a snapshot of some data, since this iteration, this phase that we're currently in, for the last five years, we have had, in the last five years, over 230 students to go through one of these programs, be it HVAC, be it welding, be it a healthcare program, forestry, what have you. Students have had an opportunity to participate in that. And the graph there is to show you, beginning in 1920 and coming forward to 2324. I'm sure we can all kind of recognize 2020 and 21. But notice how we were able to rebound even our number of students and participation in these programs. And so on average, you could see that we have 47 students or more participating in the technical scholars program. I wanted to share, kind of as a success story, that a parent actually shared, a parent of a Carver's Bay student. And this is Ms. Wright, who was sharing how her student participated in the HVAC program, earned his certification, was able to, upon graduation, go straight into a job. And this student did not stop there. He is going to be, he is enrolled to further his education at the University of South Carolina. His experience through Ori Georgetown Tech has prepared him with those skills to understand the rigor and the need for persistence and to be able to push forward in academia. And so he will combining all, he'll be combining all of these valuable experiences and accomplishments that have their foundation and roots in the tech scholars program. And so I didn't want to read to you, but you can see that summarized there from Ms. to rewrite. And finally, to know that we are still working to grow and expand our program offerings. The Teach to Teal Program, you may have seen that press release back in April, that we worked in conjunction not only with Ori Georgetown Technical College, but Coastal Carolina University. Because another area of need that we can all attest to is that for educators in our classrooms, educators at all levels. And so the Teach to Teal Program has been birthed and our school counselors are working with our students that express interest in this area in order to have them again, beginning that junior year, enter into these classes. So we're growing in the area of education. We're revisiting the area of healthcare, potential partnerships even with Tylands. We're growing in the area of computer science and coding. And so there is a lot of potential and possibility still yet to be discovered and tapped into in terms of our tech scholars program. So I appreciate so very much the council allowing me to share a little bit on these programs. And if there would be any questions that you would have that we might field at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Vereen. It's a wonderful program. Any questions from council? Ms. Vereen, I have a couple. This program is generated through the high school in cooperation with Ori Georgetown Tech, is that correct?
Correct.
And basically catering to high school students?
Correct.
Now, what about the transportation aspect? Is any type of transportation provided to those students?
So these students, in getting them to be more independent, we do ask that they be able to provide transportation to these. Certainly, as this is also one of our PACE offerings, you know, if there was a hardship or area where we could support students, we always support our students in order that they can be successful.
So there's some type of hardship for those who cannot provide transportation but desire to enroll into the program?
So we work with those schools, those counselors, those students in that area of interest to see how we might be able to support them there. And that's a great question, because especially in our rural areas. But we've had students, a matter of fact, that testimonial was a Carver's Bay student that was able to participate in the program. So we want it to be open to all.
Okay. One other question really, pertains to marketing the program. What type of marketing is being done to make the community aware of this program? Any type brochures, flyers, or anything being circulated throughout the communities to make sure these students are aware of these particular programs, other than just at the schools?
So Ori Georgetown Tech produces the flyers, which are already, always very professionally made, that we are able to circulate via our schools and school counselors. Additionally, they offer open house opportunities so that students and parents can come out to their campus and be able to tour the facilities. They do that after school hours, but they have also begun to do that within the school day. And Ms. Hope Wofford is excellent at coordinating those things and allowing our students to participate in those.
What about the possibility of having some flyers to be circulated through the communities, through community organizations and through churches, so that the students can be made aware of these particular programs and opportunities?
Certainly. I think that's an excellent idea, Chairman, that we will begin to utilize those other outlets and avenues within the community that interact with our students, because we're all a part of the same team and all trying to build the same community. So thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Sure. Thank you.
Did you say that marine science was part of the program, or isn't?
Marine science is not a part of the program. There is a forestry arm to it, but we will certainly make note if there is an interest for marine science that we can begin those discussions. As I said, we're still growing. We're still expanding, for instance, the Teach to Teal and in the healthcare avenues. And so we're looking at the data. So what are the needs of the community? What are the needs of the state? And so those are the programs that we want to make sure we're directly training our students to be able to step into.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
When you mentioned high school, as early as ninth grade, that they could enter some of these programs?
Beginning with the junior year. So students still are having to gain their core credits, you know, their math and their sciences, English Language Arts. And so it's usually that junior year where they have a large portion of that already gained, those credits, that they're able to begin those programs. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I have a question as well. Listening to the other questions that came to my mind, do you assist those students who gain certification with finding work?
And so that is an excellent question. Ori Georgetown Tech, a matter of fact, a lot of those instructors are already in contact and consultation with jobs. And so a lot of the training that the students receive is directly related to what the jobs are saying they need. And so there's conversations and connections. There's an advisory board that's meeting, looking at the curriculum. And those advisory members come from the industry. And so they're at the table and they know what is being presented to the students and they know the quality of students that are coming out.
Ms. Vereen, once a junior, senior enters that program and they graduate from high school, how long do they have to attend Ori Georgetown before they get a degree?
So it depends on the program that they are in. There are some programs, for the most part, if they finish up that summer, you know. So you've done your classwork during the school term and then you are able to finish it up in that summer semester. So that is kind of the layout in terms of a lot of the programs. But it's very program specific.
So they could graduate from high school, go through summer school, and then come out on the other end with a potential job?
Yes, in some of the programs, it works just like that. Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Thank you, ma'am.
Is there an internship component to this program?
And so that would be program by program specific. And I think in that clip, we even saw Mr. Ball, Mr. Ball and Mr. Hazelton work directly with the students to assist in that manner. It's not automatic, but there could be opportunities for those.
Okay.
We do value internships and I'm glad you mentioned that. And that's, in schools as a whole, we consider those to be our work-based learning experiences when they have internships or apprenticeship opportunities. So we are strong proponents for that.
Thank you. Any further questions from council?
Got one more question. From a per-credit standpoint, is the pricing the same as if they were to go? How much is it a credit for the students, or is there a charge for that?
So they still have the tuition rates. And as I was sharing, the cost to the student, because there are the SC-Win scholarship funds and the potential for lottery funds and the assistance from the Banelle Foundation, what then is left to the student is greatly, greatly reduced.
And in comparison, if they were to take those same classes at a four-year degree? And in comparison, if they were to take those same classes at a four-year degree, what would be in-state comparison, ballpark, from, from a per-credit standpoint?
Well, I, I think the, the general statement with the appeal of technical schools in general, you know, is that students are able to do programs sometimes in shorter lengths of time, but the costs in general for technical schools, that what you're able to do compared to four-year, uh, are generally lower.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farine.
Thank you, Chairman.
Wonderful program.
Thank you, County Council.
We'll move on down to Georgetown County Chamber of Commerce Designated Tourism Agency, Memorandum of Understanding, Madam Administrator.
Yes. Before you is our annual agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we are designating them as our designated management organization for tourism and promotion of tourism. Um, we have also taken the opportunity to update our TMC policies and procedures. We spent a lot of time on this agreement this year, just to get it up to date for what we've had in the past. I really like to thank Beth Stepman, Chamber of Commerce staff, and our legal team for their work on this document and getting us up to date with what we're trying to accomplish. Um, Beth is also here, if you have any questions about the document. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Are there any questions for Madam Administrator or Ms. Goodall from council? Okay. Here now, is there a motion for adoption of the Memorandum of Understanding with Georgetown County Chamber of Commerce?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel McCall, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. We'll move on down to proclamation number twenty-four dash twenty-three. In recognition and honor of Georgetown County native Melissa Jefferson, as she travels to Paris, France, as a member of the U.S. Olympic team to compete in the 2024 Summer Olympics. Ms. Ackers.
I am sure that everybody has heard by now that one of our own is headed to the Olympics in Paris, France. So we would like to celebrate her and present this proclamation to her, so that as she travels to Paris, she knows that her community is fully behind her and cheering her on. I can summarize or read the proclamation in full, as you wish, Mr. Chairman.
Well, with her remark about accomplishment, I think we need to read the full proclamation.
Whereas Melissa Jefferson, a Georgetown County native, has achieved the distinguished honor of qualifying for the 2024 Summer Olympics to be held in Paris, July twenty-sixth through August eleventh, and will be part of Team USA as she competes in the one-hundred-meter competition. And whereas Melissa Jefferson has demonstrated exceptional talent, dedication, and perseverance in her athletic endeavors, most recently demonstrated by her second-place finish in the one-hundred-meter event at the 2024 U.S. Olympic Trials on June twenty-second, hurting her a spot alongside teammate Sha'Carri Richardson and Twanisha Terry. And whereas Melissa Jefferson's qualification for the Olympics is not only a testament to her personal commitment and hard work, but also serves as an inspiration to the entire Georgetown County community, community and young athletes everywhere. And whereas Melissa Jefferson's journey began many years ago, when at a very young age, she demonstrated amazing athletic abilities, determination, and dedication. In 2011, she became a finalist in the nine-to-ten-year-old Georgetown County Parks and Recreation Hershey Track and Field District Competition, placing first in the state championships, and subsequently advanced, traveling to Hershey, Pennsylvania to compete in the Hershey Track and Field North American Finals. Melissa was one of only six qualifiers to represent the state of South Carolina. And whereas as a grad- Carvers Bay High School in Georgetown County, Melissa Jefferson has a decorated high school career in track and field, including a long list of accomplishments and honors. As a twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two graduate of Coastal Carolina University, she made program history-breaking records in the Sun Belt Conference, and as the university's first-ever individual NCAA track and field champion. And whereas Melissa Jefferson was a 2022 NCAA national champion upon winning the women's sixty-meter dash with a record-breaking time of seven-point-zero-nine at the NCAA Division One Indoor Track and Field Championships. And whereas Melissa Jefferson's success brings honor to Georgetown County and exemplifies the spirit of excellence, determination, and community pride that we hold dear. Now therefore be it proclaimed with great pride that Georgetown County Council does hereby celebrate Ms. Melissa Jefferson's extraordinary achievements in qualifying for the 2024 Summer Olympics and conveys its enthusiastic support and best wishes for her continued success as she represents Georgetown County and the United States of America on the world stage. Furthermore, Georgetown County Council joins with our citizens and others in extending a heartfelt congratulations to Melissa Jefferson upon qualifying for a spot on Team USA in the 2024 Olympics. Georgetown County will be cheering for you throughout the competition and upon your return home. A copy of this proclamation shall be presented to Melissa Jefferson as a token of our admiration and pride, so shall it be this twenty-fifth day of June, 2024. I believe we have some representatives, um, from her family. She, of course, cannot be here today, but we do have a proclamation of the, uh, copy of the proclamation to present to her. Also, during the Olympics, we have ordered some banners that will be displayed on the track at Beck Recreation Center, as well as on the courthouse balcony in the historic district.
Okay, you've heard the presentation from Ms. Ackers regarding, uh, our own Melissa Jefferson. Is there a motion for adoption of proclamation number twenty-four dash twenty-three?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Carolina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Yeah, I think we're going to take photos with the family on the presentation up there.
Yes, sir. If, um, anybody who is here on behalf of her family would like to come up and accept this on Ms. Jefferson's behalf, we would welcome them to step up at this time.
Thank you. You are very tall, stand up. I assure you, Council Chairman, right. So can I have a second? Everybody ready? Look this way, try to make sure your eyes are open and smile. One, two, three. You're also very, very much. Thank you. That is killer.
Again, congratulations to Ms. Jefferson and to her families. Remarkable things coming out of Georgetown. We'll move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included, included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to thirty minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield, gives her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Again, each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes, and we have a thirty-minute time period for the entire public comment section. If any of you are making the same comments regarding the same issue, then it may be feasible if you desire three minutes to take a look at it and see whether you'd still desire to speak. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comments this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker signed up for public comments tonight, and as you stated, she will have up to three minutes, and that is Ms. Eileen Johnson.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I want to come here to speak on Edox Park. The one thing that, as a council, you don't remember what your predecessors did or promised or thought about. And often y'all come and go, but your consequences of your decisions last for a lifetime. Well, we were promised in the nineties that these parks and the money that was spent on them would be utilized for green space for our young people and for our adults. And Edox Park was supposed to be a premier park. It was supposed to be the park between Andrews and Georgetown that provided that space. I was here. I've served on Parks and Recreation twice, and I'm now on the zoning board of appeals for five years. I have watched the good, the bad, and the ugly on everything that goes on in council. But y'all weren't here in the nineties when I was, when these promises were made. And I find that deciding that part of this property is disposable is inconscionable, because that is reneging on your predecessor's promise. We cannot rebuy that property. And a lot of that property is wetlands, because Ports Creek runs dark down one side, and there are other wetlands. So y'all sell a hundred and twenty-five acres and y'all declare that surplus, well, you might be selling the core of what could be done with that property. And we will never be able to actually see what our, your predecessors had promised, which is a premier park for us. And George, I'm a thirty-five-year real estate agent, too. So I understand what's going on, and I know the cost of property. So when you make this decision, there are consequences. And there are a lot of people extremely upset because we were promised in the nineties one thing, and now we're switching it up. Green space is very valuable, and our county is growing. This park needs to be preserved for the future generations. I'm pretty much had for that. I mean, at my age, it's no consequence for my great-grandchildren and your children, if they live around here, it's going to be the future of the park system. And we can't, if you take this little piece off, then if you decide to expand and go somewhere else, where are you going to go? We already have it. It's not surplus. It needs to be preserved. Thank you.
I have you on the list to speak for the land use plan. Land use plan?
Yeah.
Is coming up a little bit later.
Thank you. We'll move on down on our agenda. We're now moving up to our consent agenda. Two matters that were included on the consent agenda were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That is procurement number twenty-four dash zero-one-two, CTC Real Repair Resurfacing, fiscal year twenty-four, and procurement number twenty-four dash zero-two-two, CTC Emulsified Asphalt Pavement Ceiling Projects, fiscal year twenty-four. Now, we're coming down to our public hearings.
Okay.
And the first public hearing will be pertaining to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty to amend the future land use map to reflect the redesignation of property located at seventy-three eighty-eight Chappie Road in Georgetown County, identified as TMS number zero-three dash zero-four-four-one dash zero-one-two dash zero-zero dash zero-zero, from low-density residential to medium-density residential. The floor is now open for the public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty. Is anyone wish to speak regarding that particular ordinance? Hearing nor seeing any, the public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty is now closed. We'll move on down to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four, an ordinance to declare a surplus real property located on U.S. Highway five-twenty-one seventeen-eighth High Market Street, totaling approximately one-twenty-five point thirty-nine acres adjacent to Edox Park and designated as TMS number zero-two dash one-zero-zero-eight dash zero-zero-six dash zero-zero dash zero-zero, and to authorize the disposition thereof. Is there anyone here desiring to speak regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four? The public hearing is now open for that particular ordinance. Hearing nor seeing anyone speaking regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four, the public hearing is now closed. We move down to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-five, an ordinance to declare a surplus real property located off of Highway seventeen, lying along Woodbrook Boulevard and known as the Woodbrook Bike Path, and to authorize the disposition thereof. The public hearing is now open regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-five. Does anyone desire to speak regarding scene? Seeing or hearing anyone in the public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-five is now closed. We move down to the public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash thirty, an ordinance to approve the revised land use element of the comprehensive plan. The public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash thirty is now open. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I do have seventeen speakers signed up to speak to this ordinance, and our first speaker is Mr. Henry Westendark.
So you have seventeen people signed up?
Yes, sir.
So they're limited to two minutes per person?
That's correct.
No more than two minutes? Thank you.
Brevity is not my strength, but I'll do my best for you. I've lived in Polys Plantations for the last seven years, and especially since COVID started, I've seen an... started, I've seen an enormous traffic increase, 30% to 40% in the 2020 forward period. And I'm speaking with a little bit of knowledge, because I was a developer in South Florida for 15 years, Braddock Properties. And the difference we have in the neck is it's a very unusual configuration of land. There's no way to do a bypass effectively, and if you did build a bypass north of Brook Green around, it would be built so long in the future that we would have a disaster in the meantime. I request that you evaluate Bojow's plan with a goal of having a net zero increase compared to the existing plan. I did see that they claim a 50% reduction compared to zoning, but the zoning and the land use has been out of sync for a very, very long time. You know, you know that we're in on late here. The thing that bothers me the most, I guess, is I get these emails from Keep It Green, and they've evidently invested an enormous amount of time in evaluating the land use plan and doing their own calculations. And so now you have 5,000 or so people that are members of Keep It Green that are reading what I'm reading, and I don't think it's fair to the neck. You need to reconcile the two and not just move forward with this thing until there's some kind of a consensus as to what the Bojow plan really means for the neck. One last one is he was saying that there's 1,000 acres in the neck that could be downgraded. Well, one thing I'm an expert on is that upgrading density is money. That's how you make money in real estate, and if you go to the owners of 1,000 acres of land and tell them we want to downgrade your real estate, you're going to have lawsuits from every one of them, if at least if they're paying attention.
I'm Dwayne Draper with Keep It Green. I'd like to speak a few words from an opinion piece in the Coastal Observer newspaper from January of 2022. "We live on the Waukamau Neck because it's a beautiful place along the ocean with Spanish moss drapes, live oaks, access to miles of estuaries and rivers in Low Country charm. It has a great quality of life, and it's so important to keep it that way. That can't happen unless residential growth is well-controlled and managed. Georgetown County cannot allow more residential units to be built here than our infrastructure can handle. We cannot become another Myrtle Beach. We support the goal of no net residential density increases on the Waukamau Neck. Our infrastructure just can't handle it. There are dormant projects on the Waukamau Neck with thousands of approved residential units just waiting to be built. The Arcadia East project alone has about 3,000 units already approved for development. When built, these units will add about six car trips a day each on Highway 17, a road already stretched beyond design limits. We think it's important that the county land use plan update includes strong language to curb net residential density increases on the Waukamau Neck and calling the Planning Commission and county council to ensure its inclusion in the plan. Finally, it may seem unusual for two county council candidates running in different districts to team up for an opinion piece like this. We think it's important to show unity on issues affecting the Waukamau Neck, particularly on land use and our quality of life. If elected, we're committed to working together for the betterment of the Waukamau Neck." Sounds like something that Keep It Green would say, but this was written by Clint Elliott and Stella Mercado. Say what you mean, but mean what you say.
Hi, I'm Monica Wayland. I'm a staff attorney at the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, or SCALP. SCALP's founder, Jimmy Chandler, a former planning commissioner, laid the foundation for our ongoing commitment to participating in this planning process. The draft incorporates place types designed to encourage rockable communities that will mitigate traffic and take advantage of existing infrastructure. I want to note that thoughtful land use planning that incorporates increased density can actually preserve more open space than single-family lots. For example, in 2020, a developer requested rezoning of a three-acre lot in Polley's Island on the corner of Kings River and Waverly. Initially zoned for low density, it allowed for six single-family lots, but required many curb cuts, excessive tree removal without any protected open spaces. By increasing the density allowance, the developer would have clustered a proposed 10-unit multifamily development and preserved about 2/3 of the lot as green space with a conservation easement in perpetuity. This would have reduced curb cuts from six to one, drastically reduced impervious surfaces to under 20%, and provided a 40-foot natural buffer around the property. Thus, while the actual number of units would have been higher, the amount of land left undisturbed and permanently protected would have significantly offset that impact. This draft provides multiple safeguards for environmental protection, such as conservation subdivisions, buffer and setback requirements for wetlands and floodplains, and policies to protect trees. The draft also includes language enabling the use of cultural overlay zoning. SCALP has used cultural overlays as a tool to protect historic African-American settlement communities. Examples include our work with the Ten Mile Community in Mount Pleasant and St. Helena and Beaufort. We need this element passed to be able to create zoning regulations that protect cultural heritage. We ask that the council approve this element and move quickly to enacting zoning ordinance that can add substance and specificity to this element.
Good evening to the county council. Thank you for allowing me to speak here this evening, and also thank you for starting with such a beautiful prayer. May God's will be done. Amen. My name is Donna Perry. I attended the standing-room-only meeting at the courthouse, and I spoke at the last planning and zoning board meeting here in this auditorium. I expressed my concerns about safety, crime, increase in delays for first responders due to the increase in traffic that we will have, evacuation nightmares forcing lifelong residents out of their homes, the negative effects on wildlife, infrastructure issues, and natural resources being further depleted in our area. I've attended the packed meeting with Keep It Green and all the factual information that they provided, and I have also forwarded that to the council members. And I sent the entire speech that I spoke last time that I made to the planning and zoning board, to the city council, the mayor, the South Carolina Department of Transportation, and to FEMA. I have contacted Brent McLellan, the fire chief in Polley's, regarding these concerns with the proposed land use changes that will be decided here. And this is my proposal. This whole current land use proposal should be pushed back and revised, with the area residents in mind, all concerns heard and seriously considered, then put to a ballot vote, so that all registered voters in this county can have their voice heard for the future, for the future of the county that they live in.
Good evening. My name is Becky Ryan. I'm the North Coast Office Director with the Coastal Conservation League. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you to planning staff, Planning Commission, Bojow Group, for all of their hard work on drafting this element. I appreciate the inclusion of recommendations for low-impact development methods, cultural protection overlays, and conservation workshop. We need a local ordinance to protect all wetlands in Georgetown County, not just those that are protected at the federal level under the Clean Water Act. This was a goal that was included in the resiliency element and in the latest draft of the natural resource element, and should also be reflected in the land use element for consistency and a commitment to preserve our natural resources. That's been a priority for residents, as has come through the surveys throughout this land use discussion. Finally, let me lend my support to the goal of increasing affordable and workforce housing, even on smaller lots where appropriate. Building in the floodplain, for example, would not be advisable. As a young professional, I cannot afford a $400,000 house on the Waukamau Neck, and many of our nurses, firefighters, teachers, police officers, et cetera, cannot afford to live on the neck either. I would also urge caution in pushing development towards the western portions of our county if there are not the jobs and amenities to go along with the housing, because that is likely to induce sprawl and be an additional strain on our infrastructure and likely lead to increased traffic congestion on our major roadways if people are having to drive 15, 20 minutes to get where they need to go. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening. I'm Victoria Calder. I live in Merrill's Inlet, and I'm asking you to hit the pause button and delay moving forward with this ill-conceived plan. Instead, propose a moratorium on new development and work with your constituents to develop a plan that, unlike this one, is protective in four key areas. One, protective of our natural resources. The so-called green space that the plan describes is not synonymous with wildlife natural habitat, which is much needed and one of our most precious treasures here. Two, protective of our settlement communities. Other counties are developing solutions and implementing them to protect the beautiful gala culture, not this plan. Number three, our history. We have sites all along the Waukamau Neck that are listed in the National Registry of Historic Places. Other communities work hard to preserve their history, but you're considering allowing a concrete jungle this plan describes to destroy much of ours. And finally, our safety. This plan doesn't even appear to consider the increase in loss of human lives, given the population density this plan allows. If you vote yes, we will lose some measure of survivability in a large-scale evacuation. Yesterday, I emailed y'all documents, including national guidance that describes how tourism is essential to consider in resort areas like ours in designing what is needed for a safe evacuation. I don't see where this plan even considered this kind of critical analysis, and was a comprehensive economic impact study included in this planning process. In our tourism-dependent economy, with tourist season being hurricane season, who would bring their loved ones on vacation to our area once it becomes known that it's a death trap in an emergency? Consider the loss of tourist dollars as well as lives. And we don't just have hurricanes here. We're also at risk for wildfires, hazmat spills, and other emergencies that require getting all of us out of here fast. Picture an evacuation like the one last week in Ria Dosa, where lives were lost, and where there was very little warning, and where there were roadblocks and cars, quote, inching bumper to bumper, sometimes taking as long as an hour to go a single mile. It was absolute sheer terror, according to the quote in our paper.
Please include your statements.
And if we have to evacuate the neck, I wouldn't want to be sitting where you are and vote yes tonight. I wouldn't be able to look in the mirror, and I hope that you won't be able to either.
Victoria is a tough act to follow. When facts and evidence have been presented by residents, scientists, environmentalists, engineers, who agreed that a pause is best practice, and when these findings fail to bring hearts and sober minds together to reason, as many other counties have done very successfully, the result is always ultimate failure. When the pleas come forth from hundreds of residents and taxpayers, along with a beautiful native woman like Ms. Jackie, and those pleas fail to move the hearts and minds for simple requests to pause, there's only one thing left to do, and that is appeal to heaven. It seems that our homes, family, safety, security, beauty, history, and resources the Waukamau Neck provides all of us may be subjugated for the benefit of a few at the great expense of many. It appears that contention, pride, strife, and the like have overtaken logic, wisdom, and the spirit of cooperation. This current state of discord has never and will never produce any good thing. Scripture is very clear that pride comes before the fall. I am asking that we forgive one another for past disputes and offenses, and conduct the business of the Waukamau Neck with wisdom, grace, unity, humility, and courage. No matter what your beliefs, you must know that the benefits of having we, the people, with you far exceed the pain you will experience having us against you. You must know that having your family, friends, and neighbors praise you for good stewardship and measured governing is far sweeter than knowing you breached their trust, safety, and security to the highest level. On the other hand, you must know that voting with the will of the majority of your constituents will garner a deep and great appreciation. This land was founded upon a covenant God made with His people, and that is relevant today. And I stand before Almighty God in the name of Jesus Christ and in the power of His Holy Spirit, and I ask that He hears this humble, faith-filled appeal to heaven.
Good evening, and thank you for this time. My name is Kim Fox, and I am the executive director of the Polley's Island Litchfield Business Association, as well as a small business owner. We have put together a signature campaign that we will continue up until the third reading, and I had previously, this afternoon, emailed those signatures to you. During the update of the comprehensive plan's land use element, our businesses were engaged as stakeholders in the community. The reoccurring theme of future land use in Georgetown County is the lack of workforce housing. It is imperative for the success of our businesses, industries, nonprofits, that the county council provides land use dedicated to housing solutions, such as single, multi, and affordable housing for our workforce. The lack of housing inventory is significantly impacting our ability to retain and recruit employees to serve our community. Therefore, we support the adoption of the land use element of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Engel. I live in Polley's Island. I just wanted to ask, I want to start with a question, but I'd like my two minutes to stay remaining, and you can answer me afterwards. I don't see Councilman Bob Anderson, and he represents the Waukamau Neck. I find that a little bit telling that he's not here tonight. I spoke to him personally in April before the planning board meeting. He told me that this was absolutely nothing to worry about, that he didn't know anything about it, but then he called me back and told me it was nothing to worry about. Obviously, on the future land use, you see his name on the second page, along with the rest of you. I know that as councilpeople, you have to live in this county. I wonder if you ever drive to Merrill's Inlet from down here, deal with the traffic, drive through Georgetown, deal with the traffic. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the schools. We don't have the resources, the water and sewer department. We already have towns like Andrews that have terrible water problems. You'll see that throughout the county if our water system is pushed to the limit, which this plan will push it to the limit. I think you need to pause. I think everybody here would ask you to pause on this. Do what we elected you to do. Go out and look at these areas that they want to overdevelop. See that it can't handle it. I'm not saying we can't build here. Obviously... Obviously, all of us, every one of us that live in a house, at one point that house was in the woods. But we can't go from low density to high density. We can't use up every bit of land and mash in as many houses as possible. We don't have the resources for it. It's really not a good plan. I think it was somewhat kept from the public by some of the news. I read about this plan a year and a half ago. Most of what we're talking about today was not mentioned a year and a half ago in our newspapers. I don't know if that's bad journalism, I don't know why, but I know that you don't normally get this many people out at a council meeting. I'm hoping you'll listen to the people who elected you. Thank you.
Peter Eisenberg.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Eisenberg. I've lived on the Waukamau Neck for the last 25 years, and I'm increasingly concerned about the infrastructure and the lack of roads to support the traffic that we have now, and increasing the density and increasing the population by more than 50% is absolutely insane. We don't have... We need to step back, take a cue from Awaden, I hope I pronounced that right, that put a pause on all construction until they can reevaluate everything. We originally had Highway 31, which was supposed to be a bypass around the Waukamau Neck. That road has never been finished and needs to be finished. All the traffic going from Myrtle Beach to Georgetown, through the Waukamau Neck, through Georgetown, going to Charleston. We don't have the roads to support it. The roads are terrible, you don't even fix the roads. And I've complained and written to all the appropriate people, and everybody agrees with what I'm saying, but nothing gets done. It's time to sit back, pause, and fix things properly and support the people that elected you from the Waukamau Neck. Thank you.
Paul Barnes.
Good evening. I've lived on the neck for 26 years, and I've seen obviously the growth. I only ask you, are we using the National Building Code and can anybody answer that? Has anybody read it? I see no hands. Well, I don't know how we're making all these decisions, if in fact that's the code we're using, which I think we, I suspect we are. But it seems rather undemocratic to me to see five people, none president, who live on the neck, to make a decision for the people on the neck. Thank you.
Mary Beth Klein.
Good evening, Mary Beth Klein, and I am here again to respectfully request that you defer any action on the proposed future land use map until the density numbers for the Waukamau Neck are thoroughly understood and shared truthfully and openly with the public. I think, I hope, but I think other council members know that Bob and Stella and Clint ran on platforms that promised no increased density on the Waukamau Neck. And yet, and yet, this proposed plan increases density by more than 50%. It will bring additional 7,000 households, almost 17,000 people, and more than 14,000 cars. Can you support that? Or do you want to bring that density to our already clogged and congested neck? Because this is the quick and easy way to fill the tax coffers of the county so that needs in the rest of the county can be met. And if that is the case, if this goes through as is, some parts of the county may win, but at a great cost to every single citizen on the neck. There is nothing in this plan that brings value to them. And I don't think I'm being overly dramatic when I say this is taxation without representation. The county gets all of our money and ignores all of our input. So let's not allow that to happen. We are divided enough. So please, before we go any further, let us review these numbers. Adding 17,000 more people and 14,000 more cars to an area that can't handle what we have today is unthinkable. Let's do the right thing and create a future that is good for everyone in the county, not for the needs of some at the cost to many. Thank you.
Cindy Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Johnson. I live on the neck. Thank you Chairman Morant and members of council for hearing me. I would like to say ditto, 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 except for two people. Just a couple of comments. A comprehensive plan usually has robust involvement by the community. What you have brought to us seems to be produced by Boudreaux, our consultant. I attended all of those meetings, did all of my input, and you bring to me something that doesn't resemble what I put in. So, that being said, a community is responsible for a comprehensive plan because they use it for the next 10 years, maybe longer, so that they can see what's in their future. They can develop their future, where they plan to live, what they want it to look like. They don't want it to be an overgrown subdivision which looks like somewhere they wouldn't want to live. The future land use and infrastructure planning are two of the biggest items we need to address. And we have no infrastructure planning. Go out there any evening, any midday, any morning, and you'll get stuck in traffic. So, it's, well, there you go. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Alan Snipe.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity, and I am Snipe Allen. I have been hearing over and over again that the Waukamau Neck has shortage of affordable workforce health, lot of it tonight. We haven't heard any, what do we do about it? I did a drive around between Wilbrook and Blue Stem Roads on Polly's Island and counted the number of multifamily units. I found 1,384 units. If you figure that three-quarter of those units hold two working residents, that gives us beds for 2,422 workers. That does not include any low-cost, single-family, or mobile homes. How many teachers, firefighters, service workers are there on the neck? I guess like 500 to 700. We don't have a housing problem. We don't need multifamily housing. We have an ownership problem. The problem is that these units go up for sale, newcomers anxious to relocate here will pay any price and buy the units out from under our working class. So how do we keep affordable housing affordable? Open your minds. I propose county council consider a newcomer fee on all housing, all house closings priced lower than 20% below the average home price on the neck. This fee would not be on anybody who can produce a W-2, proving that they work on the neck. In order to work, the fee would have to be high enough to encourage the newcomers to buy a house priced above the cutoff level, say a fee of $30,000 to $50,000. Here comes the best part. Those fees would be held by the county till they accumulate enough for the county to supply housing for the most needy. The details of this idea will be worked out by a designated committee of county employees, welfare workers, and realtors. There's more, but I'm out of time. Let's think about it.
Nola Kozel.
Good evening. My name is Nola Kozel, and my husband and I have called the Waukamau Neck home since 2020. We followed my sister and brother-in-law here, who have lived here since 1996. We felt we lived in a little slice of paradise, quiet, beautiful area, lots of trees, open space, wildlife, and safe and friendly community. We've seen many changes over the years and have sadly experienced the inevitable effects of too many people living in a very small area. We now have terribly overcrowded hospitals and doctor's offices, traffic nightmares, and daily, sometimes hourly accidents which burden our police and fire departments, and more recently, we've had an uptick in crime. We have already surpassed maximum population growth for our area. Our infrastructure was never designed to handle this overwhelming number of people. And now you, the county council, the supposed guardians of the galaxy, want to force through a half-baked and hastily-developed land use plan that will open wide the door to unfettered population growth. This is certainly a developer's dream, but it is not our dream. You need to help me out here. Are you not the elected representatives of the people who voted for you, believing that you would be trusted stewards of the land and protectors of the health, safety, and well-being of your constituents? Why then are you ignoring us and our concerns? Just ignoring us? We have repeatedly and very clearly expressed our real concerns with the plan. To no avail. We need to take a pause. We need to step back. You have a lot of very angry people who are waiting to see what you are going to do.
Leon Rice.
Hey, I'm Leon Rice. Speaking on my behalf and behalf of Preserve Merrill's Inlet, Inc. We know how the editorial that Duane Draper read, how some folks got elected. So for the past year and a half, you have voted in favor of densifying and gentrifying the Waukamau Neck. Not everybody, Bob Anderson voted against every time. He looked at the written survey that the county itself sent out in 2022 that said the vast majority of the people on the neck do not want high density. We believe that should Bob run for office for reelection in the future, and we certainly hope he will, he would have no trouble in being successful. So what is your reason for voting for every high-density application that came down the pipe? I've heard the answer, well, the applicant checked all the boxes. The zoning code says he can put 16 housing units on the acre, so I guess we have to give it to him. This is wrong. This is dead wrong. You can turn down or modify a zoning request for many reasons. Incompatibility, traffic, flooding, infrastructure, too much density, crowding, access, and the ever-present, the people who voted you in ask you to vote against. I know you have received many letters and a lot of criticism. You are the counsel of the judge, the jury, when it comes to land use. Your decisions are binding. Surprised us today by sending this plan back for more revisions and get us a new map that has a little bit less red on it. Thank you.
Cindy Person.
Good evening. My name's Cindy Person. I want to say first, I was absolutely astounded to hear what I heard during the workshop. The consultant that was hired by the county and paid by the county told us at that workshop that this proposed plan increases density on the Waukamau Neck compared to the current future land use map by 10%. That is substantial. He told us that this current proposed plan, if built out, would allow 12,000 additional households. That's more than even our experts came up with, who were being conservative. Why are we here considering this? The experts in the community agree it substantially increases density. And the one thing that we did that the hired experts didn't do is that we compared the proposed maps to existing development. The bottom line is, everybody agrees this increases density. It's unacceptable to the citizens. To compare this plan, as the consultants are doing, to outdated high-density zoning from the 1970s that was never brought into accordance with the current comprehensive plan or any previous one, and to rationalize approving an increased density plan as if it's necessary to do that to downzone is absurd. You could downzone under the current plan today. You could have done it yesterday. You could have done it last week. You could have done it last year. You could have done it 10 years ago. The way you vote on this will tell us everything we need to know. Please send this back to Planning Commission. We do not want to be Myrtle Beach. Thank you.
That's our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clay. I thank you all for your comments. Let's move on down to appointments, boards, and commissions. We have an appointment to the Economic Alliance Board, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to recommend Ms. Ernestine Giddens as a member of the Economic Development Alliance Board.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Johnson, from Councilor Johnson, to appoint Ms. Ernestine Giddens to the Economic Alliance Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by? Second by Counsel Elliot. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Congratulations goes to Ms. Ernestine Giddens for her appointment to the Economic Alliance Board. We move down to resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty. Providing preliminary approval pursuant to Title XII, Chapter forty-four of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended. Madam Administrator.
Good evening. Over the next three ordinance resolutions in front of you, they are being law agreements for new businesses that are moving into the area. This particular business is actually located in the Georgetown County Industrial Park going toward Andrews. I'll be glad to answer any questions. We have legal here. It has gone through some pretty extensive legal review.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any questions for our county administrator? Hearing that, is there a motion for approval of resolution number twenty-four dash twenty?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Makado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. We move down to resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-one.
This is, this is another new business that is opening in the Georgetown County Industrial Park. This fee in lieu agreement has gone through a legal review with the company and also with our legal team. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any questions from council pertaining to resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Madam Administrator, can it be revealed the amount of investment by not only the company from resolution twenty, twenty-four, twenty-one, and also twenty? What is their investment? The number of employees and average income for these individuals? How is it, whenever we do our fee in lieu of taxes? What are they offering to bring to the table?
What I can share with you on the one that is before you, thirty-eight full-time jobs, investment of three million dollars of taxable property. Both of these properties, as we've talked about, they're looking for a pretty rapid expansion and hope to really be back before you shortly. But for this initial investment on this one, it is, this is Spry Properties. It's thirty-eight full-time jobs, three million dollars in investment. On the one that was before you, it is forty full-time jobs, four point two in taxable property.
Any additional questions for Madam Administrator regarding resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-one? Hearing that, is there a motion pertaining to resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-one for its adoption?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Carolina for adoption of resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. We move down to resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-two. Madam Administrator.
Yes. This says Project Sweet Grass. Ten full-time jobs and twenty-three million dollars in taxable property.
Did you say twenty-three?
Twenty-three million. Yes, sir.
Any further questions for Madam Administrator?
Is that also going to be at the industrial park?
No, it isn't. Thank you.
Is there a motion for adoption of resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-two?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Thanks, Madam Administrator. We move on down to our third reading of ordinances. The first one is ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty to amend the future land use map to reflect the redesignation of property located at seventy-three eighty-eight Choppy Road in Georgetown County, identified as TMS number zero-three dash zero-four-four-one dash zero-one-two dash zero-zero dash zero-two, zero-zero, I'm sorry, from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll address ten A and ten B together as they involve the same tract of land. This is six point three acres on Choppy Road, and the request is to rezone the tract from Forest Agriculture F.A. to Village Ten Thousand Square Foot Residential or V R ten. The parcel currently has one structure located on the front, and the rest, the rear portion of the lot, is vacant. This parcel has more than six acres, which is more than sufficient area for the V R ten district, and we do not consider this to be spot zoning based on its size as well as the adjacent V R ten zoning across the street. The future land use map for this area does designate this as low-density residential. A change to the map from low to medium would be needed to support the request. There is property directly across Choppy Road that is also designated as medium-density. We haven't had any changes to this request since second reading approval. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with a vote of five to zero. There was no one but the applicant present to speak at the public hearing, and the commission also recommended approval five to zero for the change to the future land use map.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from council? Is there a motion for approval for adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Makado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. And we'll go on down to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-one, which you have heard Ms. Richardson explain earlier. Do you have any more comments to add to that one, Ms. Richardson?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion for adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-one?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You had a motion for adoption from Counsel Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Makado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Oppose. Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-two to rezone approximately four point twenty-three acres located off Littrell Landings in the Litchfield area of Georgetown County, identified as TMS number zero-four dash zero-one-three-four dash zero-zero-one dash zero-eight dash zero-zero from General Commercial to Ten Thousand Square Foot Residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This request is in order to allow for the construction of a new single-family home. We've had several rezonings in this area, and we're going to have one more under second reading on tonight's agenda. As you've said before, both the General Commercial and the R ten zoning districts allow for single-family homes on Ten Thousand Square Foot lots, but the G C district has a fifty-foot front yard setback which makes construction difficult on this lot. That's why they're asking for this rezoning. The future land use map shows this area is transitional, so a change to the map is not needed. We haven't had any changes since second reading, and the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval for this request.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from council pertaining to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-two? Is there a motion for adoption of ordinance number twenty-four for approval of the ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-two?
So moved.
It's moved by Counsel Makado for the, for approval. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-three and ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-four operating budget of Georgetown County. Ms. Langston.
Ordinance twenty-four, twenty-three amends the current fiscal year twenty-four operating budget for the items specifically listed in the ordinance. Section two has been added or changed since second reading, so you'll need to do a motion to amend the text. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, staff requests that you give third reading approval to ordinance twenty-four, twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any questions for Ms. Langston from council? Hearing that, is there a motion for third reading approval of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-three?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Elliott for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Johnson. Any discussion? We move on down. Is there a motion to amend ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-three to incorporate a revised text? Ms. Langton, discuss.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Makado. Any discussion? We move on to vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose. The motion has now been amended to, we'll go back to the original motion with the amendment. All in favor of third reading approval of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-three with the incorporated revised text? Please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. We move down to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four and ordinance to declare surplus real property located on US Highway five twenty-one seventeen eight, Amica Street, totaling approximately one twenty-five point three-nine acres adjacent to Eight Oaks Park and designated as TMS number zero-two dash one zero-zero-eight dash zero-zero-six dash zero-zero dash zero-zero and to authorize the disposition thereof. Our county attorney, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. You have before you this evening an ordinance that has not been changed since second reading, but what this ordinance does is that it allows the county council to designate a surplus property on the parcel that has been identified as approximately one hundred and twenty-five point three-nine acres. This designation of surplus property would then allow the county to more expediently, more efficiently, potentially move this property and have considerations for economic development, any future development for the parcel, any type of, type of legal agreement requiring council's approval for the sale or the conveyance of the property. That would have to come back before council, which just helps streamline the process. We also have our Director of the Recreation Department here to answer any questions you may have as it relates to the Eight Oaks Park.
Thank you. Any questions for our county attorney pertaining to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four?
What's the total number of acreage for Eight Oaks?
Can y'all hear me now? Okay, so the total parcel originally purchased was three hundred and eighty-two acres. This is a hundred and twenty-five acres that is separated from the usable land where we have our ballpark and all the other amenities, maintenance facility, and all of those things by a rather extensive wetland system. This parcel is on the northeastern side of the property adjacent to Keever Street and bordered on the back by the railroad tracks. So that leaves two hundred and fifty-seven acres that we would have remaining within the park parcel. Currently, thirty-six of those acres are within the fenced ballpark complex, and that fenced complex includes land for phase-two improvements, which would be two additional three-hundred-foot ballpark, ballfields and the infrastructure restroom concession scoring towers that go along with those fields. That's all within that thirty-two acres that's fenced in. A total of fifty-six acres, including that thirty-six acres, has been developed at Eight Oaks, which includes parking, our fishing pond, and our maintenance facility. So taking that fifty-six acres out, we still have two hundred acres remaining to support the trail system that we're developing there, which we introduced an orienteering trail this spring, and we'll be coming back introducing in August a kids' track trail system. So we do have plans on those two hundred acres and things that are happening there now.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for?
Yes.
For Recreation Director.
From the onset, what other amenities, whatever, whatever, what other sports entities were ever planned on there? We mentioned the trail, walking trail, the pond. Did you mention football fields? What about soccer fields?
So those were originally shown on a conceptual for this parcel, but you may remember that we have built the track, the track field basketball complex at our Beck facility, because we can better support that with staff in that, at that area. And also, six tennis courts were shown to be that they would initially fit at Eight Oaks, but you'll recall, we per, we constructed those at East Bay because that was a better fit for the tennis players. So we have built the other, several of the other conceptual projects at other locations over the years.
Any other vision on what could be placed out there?
We still have two hundred acres that we could do anything with. The majority of what would be left that was shown on the conceptual master plan would be potential camping, primitive camping, and maybe other types of camping. Otherwise, there was not anything else shown. Of the hundred and twenty-five acres, approximately forty-five are wet. That carries over to the park side as well. So there's a third or more wetland in the acreage that we have on the park side as well throughout the property.
So eighty acres of buildable or uplands.
Approximately, yes.
That's the net surplus.
Any additional questions for our attorney or Recreation Director, Ms. Gudal? Now, okay. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four for approval?
Chairman. I'm moved for adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four.
We have a motion from Ms. Johnson for adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Makado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Three, two, one. We'll move on down to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-five. An ordinance to declare surplus real property located off of Highway seventeen lying along Woodbrook Boulevard and known as the Woodbrook Bike Path and to authorize the disposition thereof. Our county attorney.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. You have before you this evening ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-five. Georgetown County currently owns real estate approximately four point five-six acres lying along Woodbrook Boulevard and Reunion Drive, and it's generally known as the Woodbrook Bike Path. And what this ordinance does, which has not been changed since second reading, but it allows the county to denominate this particular property as surplus property, therefore allowing the quicker, the easier conveyance of the parcel to interested entities. It's my understanding that the county has been working with an entity that's going to take over this particular bike path to allow people to continue to use that as a means and methods by which they can convey and move along their property in their golf carts, bikes, et cetera. And so staff is recommending that council approve this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel Morgan. Any questions for Attorney Morgan from council?
Tommy, this, if we approve this, this will remove the county from the liability of that path, correct?
That is correct. That's one of the conditions as part of the conveyance, is to make sure that the liability aspect would move away from the county and onto the entity that's going to take ownership and possession of the, of the path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for approval of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-five?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Makado for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor for approval of ordinance number 24 dash 25, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24 dash 19. Madam Administrator?
Yes, this is the second reading for the FLO agreement for the Sweetgrass Project that we just talked about a few minutes ago. This will incorporate the text as we have discussed with you previously and allows this project to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions for our Administrator? Hearing that, is there a motion for second reading approval of ordinance number 24 dash 19?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Elliott. Is there a second? I'll second. Second by Counselor Moran. Any discussion? Is there a motion to amend the main motion to incorporate the ordinance text?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor McCallum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott to amend the motion. Any discussion? We first vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? amended motion carries. We move back to the main motion, which incorporate the ordinance text. All in favor of the amended motion with the incorporated text, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 24 dash 28. To rezone approximately 0.22 acres of property located in Litchfield Landings, identified as TMS number 04-134-001-0600, general commercial 10,000 square foot residential. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, sir. This property, as you said, is currently zoned general commercial. This is another lot in Litchfield Landings, which we just talked about earlier. I think this is the last of the smaller lots in that subdivision. This should finish those up, pending final approval from you all. This request is in order to allow for the addition and the renovation of a garage that is currently located on the property. It's, of course, surrounded by R10 zoning to the north, south, and west, and a PD to the east. The owner would like to retrofit the garage in order to make a habitable space and then extend the front out by 20 feet towards the front of the property. Again, as we've said, he is seeking this variance to have that additional allowance on the setback reduction from 50 feet to 25 feet for the front. Future land use map again shows this area as transitional. A change is not needed. The Planning Commission met in May to review the request, and they voted six to one to recommend approval for the rezoning. I'll be glad to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from Ms. Richardson pertaining to ordinance number 24 dash 28?
Holly, regarding these two that we've been talking about, there's been a few others. By changing it from GC to 10,000 square feet R10, will that decrease the impervious driveway potentially, so it actually decrease the impact to the community and water?
It could potentially, you know, if you had a small commercial use there, they would need parking certainly. That might create some more impervious surface.
And from a GC standpoint, they can still also have residential.
Yes, GC allows for four units per acre of residential development.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Ms. Richardson? Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24 dash 28?
So moved.
It's moved for approval of ordinance number 24-28. By Counselor McCallum, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 24 dash 29. To rezone one parcel approximately 1.01 acres located at 5290 Berkeley Court in Maricopa, identifies TMS number 41-0404-010-0900, from forest agricultural to one-half acre residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. The applicant here is requesting to rezone this parcel to one-half acre residential in order to conform to the existing and the surrounding zoning in the neighborhood. The parcel is currently vacant. It's bordered by half-acre zoning along with forest and agriculture to the south, and the existing uses in the area consist of residential homes and vacant lots. The parcel has sufficient area for the R1 half-acre zoning district, so this would not be considered zoning, not be considered spot zoning, excuse me. R1 half-acre, which is what's proposed, does allow for single-family dwellings, including mobile homes, on 20,000 square foot lots. The setbacks are 40 for the front, 15 for the side, and 25 in the rear. This property is located in a flood zone, so any new construction will have to meet the flood zone requirements. The future land use map shows this area as low-density residential. R1 half-acre complies with our low-density residential designation, so a change to that map is not needed. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in May, and there was no one but the applicant there to speak, and they recommended approval with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson pertaining to ordinance number 24 dash 29?
Holly, he just wants to subdivide this lot with his neighbor, correct? He's just trying to add to his existing.
Yes, sir. I think actually they own the lot beside it, so it's my understanding their plan is maybe to even take some of this and add it to their existing lot, and then still have a viable half-acre lot left.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for approval of ordinance number 24 dash 29?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCallum. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to ordinance number 24 dash 30, an ordinance to approve the revised land use element of the comprehensive plan. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. A reminder of why we are looking at this plan in the first place, of course, the state requires that we have a comprehensive planning, that we have a comprehensive plan. That's based on the Enabling Act of 1994. According to that document, the Planning Commission must, by a majority of vote, adopt a resolution that recommends the comp plan element to the governing body, and then you, as a council, must then hold a public hearing and adopt the plan by ordinance. The language from the state law says that we are required to have a land use element which considers existing and future land use by categories, and then it lists the categories there, and that this should be developed as part of our comprehensive plan. The amount of, we've discussed at various workshops and meetings, the amount of public outreach that was done with this plan, that's also summarized on page seven of the plan for you. One thing that I'm not sure we have talked about a lot is this element also includes a vision statement that was created from the public input that was received. That's found on page five. It does talk about the collective values, goals, aspirations, and the desired future of the community, specifically with regards to land use and development. The statement refers to the area's unique natural resources and ecosystems, and it also looks to the cultural and history of our area while balancing that with the need for economic development and prosperity. The plan also addresses critical needs for our area in terms of land use, the establishment of the land use types, the proposed future land use maps, and the goals and strategies that are listed are based on the following critical needs that are discussed in the plan. Respect for established communities and neighborhoods, affordable and workforce housing, the conservation of natural resources, the available infrastructure for community facilities, as well as the suitability of the land. And then, of course, as we've said, the plan speaks to the implementation of the plan itself. As we've said, that is a very important next step. Won't go over them again, but the plan does have 10 distinct character areas or place types, which are discussed starting on page 50. Those allow us to address different areas of the county differently, to maybe even have some lower-density designations in areas in the western part of the county where they might be more appropriate. In addition to the maps, I think the maps get a lot of discussion, but the plan also includes goals and objectives, and those are listed under five main headings, which include preserving character and culture through sustainable growth, through conservation, and through placemaking, as well as promoting prosperity through affordability and through the economy. These goals and strategies are provided in order to reflect the vision that we just talked about earlier. We have heard a good bit of concerns, as have you, about increased density. Those were brought up frequently, especially from residents of the Walk of My Neck. The proposed element and the future land use maps do recommend several sections that refer to density. It recommends targeted rezoning of areas that are currently zoned for high density, but where the predominant existing land use is single-family. The new community mixed-use designation, which is the only designation that allows for the highest density level, we only have three areas of that on the Walk of My Neck in the plan, and that section reflects a downzone in density from the current maximum of 16 units per acre to a maximum of 12 units per acre. The proposed maps also support the decrease in allowable density on the Walk of My Neck. It decreases the amount of area available for the general residential, which is our highest-density zoning district development, by providing a new place type of residential mixed-use, RMU, that's the orange areas on the map, for areas that are directly adjacent to Highway 17, but that density is listed at four to eight units per acre. And again, as we've said, it also further recommends reducing the density in the neighborhood sections down to a maximum of five units per acre, which is considered medium. In summary, the proposed land use element with revision reflects the public input that was received. It reflects existing conditions, including the availability of infrastructure and the presence of natural resources. It looks at established developments and neighborhood patterns, and focuses on placing priority investments, which include workforce housing, and a priority on aligning the zoning ordinance and the zoning maps with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommended approval for the plan to the Planning Commission for both the revised document and the maps. The Planning Commission discussed the document at their April and May meetings. Public hearings were held at both meetings. Many spoke in opposition to the plan regarding their desires for low density at both meetings. There was initially a vote to defer action so that staff and Planning Commission members could meet with stakeholders and hear from experts. That vote failed with a vote of three to four. A subsequent vote was made to recommend approval for the plan and to give council the opportunity to address any information and data, and that vote passed with a recommendation of, with a vote of four to three to recommend approval for the plan. A couple of updates. There have been some slight changes made since first reading to the maps. That was basically to clean up some overlapping areas we had in the western portion of the county. There was also a section of Woodbrook that wasn't showing up correctly. It's a plan development, so they have switched that to the covenant community designation. That's the gray designation on the map. We have also gotten a few issues that we anticipate addressing before third, minor issues. We've discussed adding a list of abbreviations to the plan. I think there's some tweaking along Highway 701 that we want to make, and a small commercial area in Santee, and those we will have addressed for you, assuming at a third reading, at a potential third reading. The build-out analysis we addressed at our workshop earlier today, appreciate you all coming early to attend for that. As was stated, overall, the proposed land use maps reduce density by 27% over the current zoning. They reduce density by 46% over the current future land use map on the Walk of My Neck. They show a slight 10% increase over the current future land use map, but a 50% reduction over the current zoning. And as we said, zoning is the most critical factor because zoning is what we currently have in place to regulate development. If we get a new development come before us, zoning is what we use, and that's what tells the developers, the subdividers, what they can legally do currently. So we feel that that 50% is a very important number. The natural, I wanted to touch on the natural resource element, too. As you know, your agenda and was deferred and then withdrawn with the idea that we would bring that back before you. We are working on pulling that back out and hope to have a future workshop with you all to discuss that piece of the. With that, I think that's what I had to share with you. I'll be glad to try and answer any questions you all might have for me.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council for Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance number 24 dash 30?
We heard in public hearing several people bring up a pause to passing this. I'm not done yet. Thank you, though. I want to understand, effectively, in 2015, the last update was made to the plan. So in effect, we've been in a seven-year pause. Is that, it's not been updated in seven years? 15, actually, nine years.
More than that, yes, ma'am.
And by state law, we have to do this, and update every five years, but a new plan every 10 years. So the last new plan was in 2010, the update was in 2015. So we've been in limbo for nine years. Is that fair?
That's correct. We have been working on other elements of the plan. As I've said before, Georgetown County has historically updated its elements separately, with each one on their own schedule. We feel that the best approach would be, once we get this, once we get the final elements reviewed and done and the plan completed, to start with a clean slate with the 2024 plan and get all the elements on a common schedule for the next five-year review and 10-year update, and that's actually recommended in this plan as well.
And the land use map, like all elements, it's a guide, it's a live document, which is why we make updates to it basically almost at every meeting, I think, that I've been to.
Yes, ma'am. And there's nothing that says we have to wait for five years to review or wait for 10 years to update. If there is a significant change, then we should be looking at that as a living document. We've used the example of infrastructure, you know, if water and sewer infrastructure becomes available in areas that it's not available in now, then that may be a need to look at that area and how it's designated on the future land use map and look at considering some changes.
And one of my biggest concerns was actually, as I learned more about it, was the zoning aspect. So zoning is the actual law of what can be built, and the comprehensive plan, i.e. the land use element, is a guide to what could be built. So if this were to pass tonight and go into third reading with the updates that you were talking about earlier, we could take this plan and then effectively zone the Walk of My Neck to decrease the zoning that's currently, the potential is there for 25,000 units, correct? And that would actually decrease it by over 13,000, I think. I tried to do the math earlier.
12,000, yes.
12,000, okay.
Twelve and a half.
Okay.
And this plan would give us some support for doing that.
So as a body, we could then do an overarching update to our zoning ordinance to then actually effectively actually decrease zoning based on this plan, instead of doing it parcel by parcel by parcel.
I think the language is here to support targeted areas, not a parcel by parcel, but targeted areas, and I would assume you would start in areas of greatest concern. But I think the language is also here to support zoning text changes. You know, we've talked a lot about that general residential district and how it allows a wide range and all the way up to 16 units. This plan supports taking that district and changing it, maybe splitting it up into other types of zoning districts or combining it with another, but amending that to support the changes that this plan recommends. While it is a guide, it is recommendations, and it's been widely reviewed, and I think it would give support for some of the, hopefully, future regulatory changes that council may want to make.
And we could also update things like the tree ordinance, which we've already done. Impervious pervious building that could come up in the future. We could also address setbacks, other ways to decrease density.
Yes, ma'am. There's support here for a myriad of changes to add protections to natural resources. We have talked about, I think Ms. Ryan mentioned it, a wetlands protection ordinance. That's addressed in natural resources, which we'll bring back up as well. Wetlands protections increase buffers. We don't currently have buffers off freshwater wetlands at all. That's something we've addressed in both documents. This document also talks about. This document also talks about buffers, protecting greenways. All, all that language is addressed multiple places throughout this document.
Can you speak to the place types? Why are we making changes from low, medium to high? Kind of simplified to these place types. What, what's the reason for that change?
I view it as a place types allowing us to address the diversity that this county has. Right now, if you remember the, the maps that were shown, when you look at the current future land use map countywide, a large majority of the western part of the county shows as low density. And low density has one definition in our current plan, and that's two units per acre. There isn't a lower density, there isn't a super low, there isn't a very low. And some sections of our county, two units per acre may not be supported. It may not be supported by infrastructure and it, it may not be in keeping with the current development. So these place types allow us to give some variation to that. And it gives us some newer categories where we might can address those lower densities. And right now, also, we have a big jump. The medium density designations in our zoning sections that allow that stop at five units. Then we get to the GR and the high that jumps all the way to 16. So if you have a situation where a seven or eight unit per acre development might support some affordable housing and might allow for some lower cost housing, but GR is about the only way they have to get there, unless they come to you with a planned development or flexible design district. So this would also, I think, help us to maybe find some districts where those things could be addressed without jumping all the way to the highest density that's allowed.
And from a zoning standpoint, you said the GR is up to 16 units.
That's the maximum allowed in GR today.
And this would have potentially decreased the maximum to 12?
This recommends taking that maximum to 12 units per acre and, and in a minimal amount of areas on the neck.
Okay. Thank you.
Holly, in general, commercial, residential is allowed, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Ms. Richardson from council pertaining to ordinance number 24-30? Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-30?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt second reading of ordinance number 24-30.
We have a motion from Councilor Johnson for adoption of ordinance number 24-30 for second reading. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair and councilors, we've heard the plan, plan laid out. What can be seen almost immediately, some of the things are trafficking issues, increased requirement for law enforcement, fire and emergency services, stormwater issues, drainage issues, et cetera. This is a tough situation here because we're looking at this current plan that's being proposed. And I hope what has been laid out by our planning commission, it will be flexible enough to recognize many changes that are going to be coming. I understand and I hear the concerns of the Walk of My Neck. Population increases are coming. And on this issue, which I feel I would like to see it, the action deferred for further consideration. And totally, totally, totally reviewing the Boudreaux housing proposal, our proposal that we lay this thing out, analyze it, and come up what we feel would be the best situation. I understand traffic, okay? And if you see the current traffic situation that has developed on the Walk of My Neck right now and you simply add more density to the situation, that'll be more. It's two lanes north and two lanes south. And it's coming into Georgetown, it becomes a chokehold. And these are many things that, I mean, we have to thoroughly consider this situation. And I make a motion for deferment. We can, between the next time it comes up for third reading, as long as we can totally vet this out, think the process out, and absolutely be sure we absolutely have the best situation for Georgetown County, Walk of My Neck, and other parts of this county.
I guess I'm going to go to our legal councilors. We have a motion on the floor and we have a second. And now we're having a new motion coming up for a deferment. Do we need to carry the other? What, what position do we take at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I'm interpreting what Mr. Carolina is saying is a motion to defer. And otherwise, I think it's also an parlance known as a motion to table. And that what that can do is, in that particular instance, if there is a second and there is an affirmative vote by council, it could table this matter. I know that this count typically a table that is provided for and the rules basically allows this matter just to be carried over until the next meeting. I also know that there's previously, my understanding, there have been motions to defer that have been brought before council and considered in the past. But I think at this point in time, that if this has been brought forward, it's functionally, it's a secondary motion, requires a second, and then could have a positive affirmative vote by council at that time.
So we are going to take, be going to take the motion to defer. All right, we have a motion on the floor to defer ordinance number 24-20, 24-30, I'm sorry. Is there a second? Is there a second from council to defer ordinance number 24-30? Not hearing a second, the motion dies for lack of a second. So we'll go back to the original motion and second for approval of ordinance number 24-30. We ask for, we ask for quiet in the, in the audience, please. Thank you. Okay, now we are, is there a motion to amend ordinance number 24-30 to incorporate the revised text?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Johnson for an amendment to ordinance number 24-30 to incorporate the revised text. Is there a second? I'll second it. It's second by Councilman Morant for incorporation. Any discussion? All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Amended motion carries. We'll move on down. We move to vote on the ordinance number 24-30, which incorporates the text of the amended motion. All in favor of the main motion with the revised text, please raise your hand. Oppose? All right. We'll, we'll call the motion again. We have quiet in the audience, please. Law enforcement, please escort these folks out and make sure they are quiet as they are leaving. Okay, we'll, we'll move on. Now that we have quietness within the audience, we'll move on. We'll go back to ordinance number 24-30, main motion with the incorporated revised text. All in favor of the amended motion with the revised text, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to ordinance number 24-31. Madam Administrator?
This is the second reading of the FLO agreement. You need to incorporate the text into your approval process so we can move forward with Craft Made Properties LLC.
Thank you. Any questions from Madam Administrator for ordinance number 24-31? Is there a motion for second reading approval of ordinance number 24-31?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor McCall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion regarding the main motion? Now, is there a motion to amend the main motion to incorporate the ordinance text?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Elliott to amend the main motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McCall. Any discussion? Okay, we are going to vote on the amended, the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go to the main motion with the amended text. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to 11F, ordinance number 24-32. Madam Administrator?
Yes, sir. This is the main FLO agreement for spry properties. There have been no changes made since we first introduced this information to you. We ask for your approval to proceed to the next step.
Thank you. Any questions for Madam Administrator from council? Hearing now, is there a motion for a second reading approval of ordinance number 24-32?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Carolina. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? We will move on, we will ask for an amendment to motion, an amendment to ordinance number 24-32 to incorporate the ordinance text. Is there an amendment to the motion?
So made.
It's moved by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? We first vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will move back to the main motion which incorporates the revised text. All in favor of the revised motion which incorporates the text, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Let's go on down to ordinance number 24-33. Mr. Ackerman?
How you doing, Mr. Chairman?
Doing well. Thank you.
The motion before you tonight is one that would authorize the capital project sales tax question to be placed on the ballot in November. The included in this ordinance is the question that has been generated by the CPST Commission. This is the exact question adopted by the commission. The projects that you were presented with at past workshops are identical on this list. The dollar amounts of the projects have been changed slightly since the presentation at the workshop. The commission felt that it was prudent to include a 4% project management cost in each project. There are two projects that do not include, that the numbers did not change because the project management cost was already included in those. So if you'll, if you'll just, if, the first one, for example, the Browns Ferry Water District, $3,068,000 for water system improvements. That project was submitted as $2,950,000, so we've increased it by 4% for project management cost. That is the only change. We have clarified at the last workshop. There was some question about the covered pavilion to be built out in Pleasant Hill. That park is actually named Northwest Regional Park at Pleasant Hill. That is included in this language. It would have been easier if it was Olive Park or Eight Oaks Park, but it's, it's a little confusing. And we did clarify the Oatland Sewer Project as well, fixed that typo. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any questions for Mr. Ackerman?
Well, where's that, where exactly is that park going at Pleasant Hill?
So there's a current park in Pleasant Hill that has baseball fields, I think. And Beth can answer, I think it's maybe a multi-use park there or a multi-use field. But there's a big empty open space, but there's no facilities at that particular park for folks if they want to have an event where they need to get out of the rain. Or it's, everything is open. So if there's bad inclement weather, nothing can be done at the park. This would actually be a, I want to, I had the number on my head, but it's a very large open pavilion. It's about 8,000, 10,000 square feet. It's huge. It'll have ability to play basketball, pickleball. People could use it for birthday parties or family reunions or whatever kind of events. It'll be a multi-use type, open-air facility with a covered top, and I think restrooms.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Ackerman? Is there a motion for second reading approval of ordinance number 24-33?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor McCall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the ordinance text as Mr. Ackerman stated?
So made.
It's moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McCall. Any discussion regarding the proposed amendment? We'll vote on the amendment. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Amendment passes. Now we'll go back to the main motion, which includes the amended text. All in favor of the main motion which incorporate the revised text, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go down to ordinance number 24-34. Ms. Langston?
Good evening. Ordinance 24-23, or 34 is along the same lines as the one that Walt just presented to you. It's being presented for second reading. It's the county's intention to include a local option sales tax lost referendum on the general election ballot in November. The referendum question will ask voters to approve an additional 1%, sales tax for the purpose of reducing the property tax burden annually imposed upon the citizens of Georgetown County. This ordinance is required by the South Carolina State Code of Law, Section 4-10-10. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about loss. Otherwise, we ask that you give a second reading approval to ordinance 2434.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any questions for Ms. Langston from council?
Karis, we have a reassessment coming up next year, correct?
Correct.
This lost is going to help offset any potential increases, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for Ms. Langston from council? Hearing now, is there a motion for second reading approval of ordinance number 24-34?
So made.
It's moved by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McCall. Any discussion? Since the ordinance was revised, is there a motion to amend the, the ordinance to incorporate the revised text?
So made.
It's moved by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McCall. Any discussion? All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. The motion has been amended. All, now we go back and vote on the main motion with the amended text. All in favor of the amended motion, or the main motion with the amended text, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go down to our approval of minutes. Is there a motion for approval of our council minutes of May 28, 2024? Is there a motion for adoption of those minutes?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McCall. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. I think we need to go into executive session for legal briefing. We would need to adjourn to executive session to receive the legal advice and discussion regarding the possible settlement of legal claims in the case of Winsell and others versus Georgetown County and others. Civil Action Number 2021-CP-22-00897 and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to SCO and annotated Section 30-4-782. Is there a motion to move an executive session to discuss those particular matters?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McCallough. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We are now entering to executive session to discuss for legal briefing. Motion carries. We are now entering to executive session to discuss for legal briefing.
Okay.